All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
It's July 18th at approximately 7:03. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcast. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify me at this time. Seeing none, roll call members. Clerk.
Counselor Sun.
Here.
Counselor Lovick.
Here.
Counselor Alice.
Present.
Counselor Pyson is excused. Counselor Dolan.
Here.
Counselor Gilmore.
Here.
Counselor Wheeler.
Here.
Counselor Mayo.
Here.
Counselor Lenovich.
Here.
Counselor Mass.
Here.
President Renaud.
Here.
Counselor Ripick is excused, and Counselor Stempel is excused. Madam President, you have a call.
Oh, great. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And now is the public comment portion of our meeting, and there's a sign up sheet right there. And has everybody had a chance to sign up? Who wants to sign up? Okay, and so you have three minutes to talk about any subject you would like. John, could you please hand me the sign up sheet? Thank you. But before we do that, is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the April 18, 2018 town council meeting minutes?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Doris Cowdery.
Good evening, Town Councilors. Pleasure to be with you. It's very exciting to have--
Doris, could you please speak into the microphone so we could, just so that we can hear you?
I'm new at this.
What's that?
I said, "I'm new at this."
Oh, yes.
"I'm new at this."
Oh, okay.
So, "Good evening, Town Councilors. A pleasure to be with you. It's very exciting to receive an almost $9.4 million grant from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners to help fund our new library. The grant is a result of the Board's belief that our current library is unable to serve the needs of our community. For example, the building is barely handicapped accessible. Only about 10% of our patrons can sit down at any one time. We only have space for eight computers. We do not have a teen space or an adequate children's room. And the result is also the result of the Board's confidence in our ability to build a new, state-of-the-art library for Greenfield, which would be handicapped accessible, have many more computers, an excellent children's room, and a separate teen space, along with private study rooms, and even a cafe area where folks can bring their own food and beverages and enjoy all that our library has to offer. It is also the result of a lot of hard work by over 100 people for the past five years. I'd like to thank our advisory committee, the building committee, the Friends of the Library, the library staff, and the trustees of the library. Also, the many community members who came to our open forums and gave us their ideas and their feedback. I would also like to give a shout out to our Greenfield Public Library Foundation, which is currently working on a capital campaign. Its goal is to raise at least $2 million. Our library averages 500 visitors every day. This adds up to about 160,000 visits per year. Based on the experience of other communities who have built a new library, that number could easily exceed 200,000. Just imagine the positive impact on our downtown with that much activity in our building. We want to assure the council that all of us who are closely involved with this project will continue to work diligently to ensure the best possible library for the lowest possible cost. I want to thank you for your support over the past five years, and look forward to your continuing support as we move forward towards a new library for Greenfield. The Friends of the Greenfield Public Library are hosting a party at the library this Saturday, July 21st, from 10 to 12, to celebrate the awarding of our grant. Everyone is welcome to come celebrate with us. Thank you."
Thank you, Doris. David Muscatello.
43 Country Club Road. In April, I asked the town 12 questions with respect to GSET. I did receive the answers, and they are public, if you want to take a look at them. I was not pleased with the answers. I asked questions. What was the total monthly expense? The answer, 40 to 60K per month. I asked the monthly income. At the time, the answer was 30K. I asked, "How much money is left out of the $5 million fund?" I was told 95,000. The math is simple. The revenue isn't meeting the expenses, and I'm sure the $95,000 is long gone. So where is the money coming from to support this? Is it the $1.2 million in the enterprise fund? That's a big no, because there isn't really any real money in that fund. Enough is enough, I ask. For most businesses, if a company or a portion of a company isn't making a profit, or at least paying its bills, they have a plan and a timeline. And if it doesn't succeed, they close it down, sell it, or come up with other ways to either support it, to fund it, or to really take a hard look at maybe stopping it. I've been monitoring and asking about the financial game plan since the disturbing beginning of this undertaking, and have not seen anything yet. I have now, for more than a year, expressed my concerns for this project. So we are spending money from other means or budgets to support this project, with no timeline and no real deadline. This is unacceptable to me and to the taxpayers of Greenfield. Something has to be done about this, something has to change, and I will not give up until it does. I have asked every member of Stop Spending Greenfield to get in touch with their representative and demand change. I will be asking the town where the money is coming from, what budget it's being taken away from to support GSET. I think the councilors really need to take a close look at GSET over the next few months, and maybe the next year, and really make some hard decisions. I appreciate your hard work and your time. Thank you."
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, and we do not have any public hearings, and we do not have a second reading this evening. So communications from mayor, town officers, and employees.
Good evening, Madam President and Councilors, and town clerk staff. I have no announcements, but I'm here to answer any questions. And Mark and I will try to address some of the emails that you've sent, and some of the questions I'm sure you have about a number of issues in the town.
Counselor Mass.
Mr. Mayor, two months ago, maybe longer than that, I asked you about the funding source and the methodology for putting a fence around Eunice Williams' pump area. You told me you'd get back to me the next day. Two weeks ago, I sent you a follow-up email saying I still haven't received the answers. Can you tell us what the funding source was for that, why the council didn't know that we were going to put up a fence, what the methodology for making that decision was?
Okay, yes. I believe the town accountant, Elizabeth Rachi, sent an email to you and said she was not part of the decision. At least, I'll check that and see if you were on it. That's what I got. The question is, how was the fence financed, and who did it? Okay, so the DPW arranged for an RFP, which is a normal process through their CPO, the procurement officer, came to, I think it was $11,280, and the money came from unrestricted program funds. The unrestricted program funds allow for any community expense that, without further allocation, to take care of community issues.
I guess I'm a little confused. Unrestricted funds from, you're talking state aid, unrestricted state aid? So this is chapter 90 funds?
No.
So which funds is--
So unrestricted program funds are community development block grant monies. Over the past, maybe 25, 35 years, we've expended several tens of millions of dollars. Many of those funds were on a payback at some point in time in the future for each time a loan was made, whether it was a rehab loan on a piece of property, or a payback or a loan to another project. When those projects are complete, it is paid back to the town. The law calls for any repayment that is beyond two years, I believe it is, goes into unrestricted program funds. Any payback before, within the two years, goes into program funds, which go back out in the same manner, or borrowed from in the first place.
So, I didn't see any unrestricted program funds in the budget book. Can you tell us how many, how much we receive in unrestricted program funds each year?
No. I can get that information for you.
And can you tell me how the decision was made related to issuing the RFP? Who was involved in making that decision? What community dialogue was involved in whether or not we're going to put up a fence?
Yeah, the same dialogue takes place when we're doing public safety and safety of our water supply. That was the primary intent. And the encroachment of individuals and vehicles onto the, and near the water filter plant at Eunice Williams Drive, or the pumping station, brought about the fence solution. We tried and discussed a number of different options, from large boulders, to signage, to limited parking, and then we went to the fence.
So you say the same public process? Was there a public hearing or a public meeting where this was discussed?
No.
So when you say "we," you mean just yourself and the DPW?
All internal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
I have questions related to bonding, but I don't want to take all the time. I'll come back.
Counselor Sun.
Mayor, I think the funds for the library are coming in. Have you looked into putting a fire station somewhere so it'd be safer to park fire trucks in?
Thank you, Counselor, for that question. On the 25th of this month, which is next week, or no, the 25th, on Wednesday of this month, we will have a public discussion on the public safety complex. There'll be a presentation by the developer, and we will address that issue and the solution to where the fire department is going and why. All of the other departments involved in that project will also be present to explain the reasons and rationale for relocating. The purpose of consolidating public safety will also be explained, and the architects and engineers will be there to explain the type of building that they want to build.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Alice.
Thank you, President Renaud. On June 3, I sent a list of questions that I was hoping to have answered on the public safety complex, because we were forwarded a resolution approximately a month before that. I have yet to receive any answers to any of the questions. Do you have any of the answers to any of the questions for this evening?
Not for this evening, but we do have your answers. Many of your questions were not fully complete at the time, and with the change in direction of about four months ago, going to new construction rather than rehab, a lot of your questions were to an unrelated event. So we're trying to, hopefully we'll get your questions answered by the 25th. There's another meeting coming up with, I think, the 23rd, that will be our final presentation meeting. So the developer and finance and the city will be able to at least give you all the background information for every question you asked.
So, a lot of the questions that I asked, I would, if I was writing the resolution, I would have had the answers before that. And I'm just wondering if you can point me to the studies that are pertinent to each one of these monetary figures? Because I assume we have them already, correct?
Yes.
Do you know which ones they are? Can you tell me what they are? That way I can try to find them. Because I won't, I can't make more meetings. I really would hope that those meetings would be at council meetings, so that we could, you know, have--
Yeah, so we're building that folder on the website. Many of those studies are already on the website. Tomorrow, I can get, we can get all the councilors that link. It's in the process of being built so that it can be accessed by anybody.
And then, one or two last questions.
Some of them go back quite a few decades, so it's, they're not even relevant today, but they are, have been noticed by local government in the past.
The specific question that I have is, if this public safety complex doesn't go forward, what is the plan for the fire department? Because that has to be moved for the library. So what is our contingency plan on the fire department?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think more people have to address that than myself, the engineers, the developer, because the primary purpose of locating and having the design of the library, which was approved, and as you just heard, the grant from the state given to the city of Greenfield, will provide for that space that's required. We have other options, none of them very favorable. And there's one, option A is our plan to consolidate public safety. Option A1 is to do a phase-in, which would just be the fire department. And if we have to move something, the department temporarily, that might be a possibility. Our feasibility study four years ago on sites in the town of Greenfield identified seven, I believe it was, and by the time we got around to looking at a half a dozen of them, they are all gone. So we've got an ongoing conversation with the library group, and it's possible that parking is solved. So maybe the parking issue is somewhat solved for a temporary period of time with the parking garage. But these are a number of options that we have to have further discussions and pursue at a later date.
One last question.
I think what's important is that the timeline. So with the announcement of the grant, it gives the library group, and the building committee, and the council, six months to accept. And then there's a year and a half, 18 months, to design. So in that two-year period, we're expecting to solve all the issues that might be involved in building on that site.
I just have one last question that's unrelated to this. We had a meeting at 114 Main Street. It was one of the last meetings that I was presiding over, and there was a parking issue that happened. And you had stated to me that a bill would be sent to the DA's office for the parking meters and spaces that were taken up. Has that happened?
I'm not certain. I'll have to check.
Could you, if you could, just please find that out? And then I'd also like to see the payment for that invoice.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Dolan.
I just wanted to follow up on the situation with the pride poster at town hall. I've heard a couple of conflicting reports. Would you mind just summarizing your understanding of how that situation was resolved, and how we're going to keep things like that from happening in the future?
Yeah, let me say, and I'll explain as much as I can. There is still employee action occurring at the moment. There's also, I just reviewed the HRC meeting of the, I think it was July 9, the Monday. So for my personal knowledge of the event, I heard about it the night of the council meeting, where I was sick at home watching you on Almost Life TV, but I have DirecTV, and it's pixelled quite a bit. But I was understanding most of what was being said at the meeting. So that was the first time I heard about it. I think Mark, it was also his first time. So from what I learned from the HRC meeting and the interviews that have been done since then, my understanding is that some people have taken the legal review policy that was under legal review, and considered that to be the real policy. That was not, that was a working document, signed by me, to indicate to the attorneys that this is all past interior, and what do you think is anything wrong with this policy? That policy was brought about because of issues with posters, and flyers, and a number of other, creating a whole graffiti atmosphere within and on the town hall, in all rooms and doors and walls. So we were addressing that. We had a solicitation policy prior to, was put in effect in, I think it was December of 2013, when we had the incident in May, and we had some other posters and flyers that we take down. You know, we love the events and everything, but if we have to take them down, they're out of date, or they're taped or stapled. Whether they're musical events at Hoxton Reed, or something happening at Wormtown, it's just not regular business for the city. So to find a solution for that, we decided that the committee, community boards, rather, should be the places where anything goes, on a community board in every municipal building. So that was the part we were in, finding out where all the community boards are in every building in town, and legal review of the new policy that would have come out at some time in the future. So the policy that HRC was addressing was not implemented, was not real. I think they made a mistake on that, but we'll explain that at their next meeting. The event you're speaking of, it's not the content, it's the, it's the where you're putting posters all over the town?
Yeah, I just want to add one, a little bit more to it. As the mayor said, any action that was done, it was content neutral. There was no intent to stop speech. But I just want to say too, we're still involved in a process of gathering more information, because there is an employee action. So there's some, so we cannot talk until after that has been resolved, as I said at the last council meeting. So once I, because I'm involved with that with the town attorney, once we have it resolved, then at that point in time, we'll be able to say more about it. But I just wanted to say one thing, that while I was away, when one of our staff went to the HRC Human Rights Commission meeting, and I did watch the video of it, and I just thought it was really unfortunate, because this person has been singled out as done something wrong, and that did not happen. So I want to speak on her behalf. And again, we will continue to get this resolved behind us. And again, we have community boards, and posters will be allowed there. So I just want you to know that. It's not finished yet, but we are going to make sure this doesn't happen again.
Of course.
And thank you, if I may, Madam President. The person representing herself, at the request of the HRC from the mayor's office, I never received an invitation, and to the members of the HRC, I will tell you that when I do receive an invitation from you, I will attend. But I will be at your next meeting. So those claims and allegations that I sent somebody, I sent a young woman with a baby to the meeting, is completely erroneous, inaccurate, and I'm really disappointed with 80% of that board for their actions that evening, and their attack on a municipal
Counselor Gilmore.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to backtrack a little bit, and talk a little bit about the fire station, because I know there are some concerns that it is not serving our needs, our current needs, and over the course of the next two years, it's going to deteriorate further. So I wonder, has there been any kind of study or estimate? Do we know how much longer we're going to be able to keep that in place before we need to move?
Yeah, we have a current engineering study, and we have an estimate of repair, renovation, and addition to that property, all of which is, when the numbers are released, and we'll release on Thursday evening on the 25th, or Wednesday on the 25th, then it will appear quite obvious that that building has seen its better days.
What time on the 25th is that meeting?
6 o'clock, at the JZ Community Center.
Mr. Mayor, congratulations on the capping of the parking garage. I want to bring us back to the financing of the parking garage. One of the reasons why we had cost overruns in the parking garage was the delay from receiving the award of the grant till when construction began. Is that correct?
Yes.
And what were the annual increases in construction costs? It was a percentage, right?
Yeah, it was 4%.
4%.
But those come from vested areas.
Sure. I understand. I'm just trying to get some more information related to the library. The library timeline that you gave us was six months to make a decision, two years to do design. Is that correct?
Yes. You can verify that with the library group. That's my understanding.
Is it your contemplation that a public safety complex would be completed during that two years?
Yes.
Okay. And has the design been done for the public safety complex?
No.
How long does it take to do the design for the public safety complex?
We don't have any input into the design. Actually, we're just space tenants, so we're only looking for space. It's up to the developer to provide the design, the timetable, and the cost.
It's not being built to suit?
No.
And so if that developer pulls out, you're without a, you're without a location for a public safety complex?
I would say so.
And the, and if that developer takes longer to develop, to do the build out, it may not happen within the two years?
We'd have to wait for some time to pass before we look at that decision.
How long from when the design is done will it take for the construction to begin on the library itself?
I don't know that.
Well, how long will it take for the demolition to take place of the fire department?
I don't know that either, but during their RFP process, it will be determined the phasing and the choreography that will take place on demolition and new construction.
And none of that timing has been done out yet?
That's for the library?
Well, for the public safety complex.
You were talking about the library.
Well, okay, so the demolition of the, the demolition of the existing fire station can't happen until they have a place to go, right?
Yes.
Okay. So after they have a place to go, and we don't know how long that'll take, but you estimate it will be within the two years, there'll have to be some demolition of the existing structures that are on that space before a new library can be built?
Yes.
And you don't know how long that will take?
No. But what I'm saying is that you can start new construction and leave the fire station there, so it could be a year later.
Okay. So you think you're going to be able to do them simultaneously?
I don't think so. I don't think so. It's going to take a year and a half for design, plus six months to make a decision from the council. So that's two years. We hope to have an agreement from the council to forward a lease within the next 60 days.
And the total cost of the library is approximately $21 million?
Again, that's the library committee's purview.
You don't know?
Jeez, I don't know everything. You're right, Isaac.
I mean, it's a major, it's probably the most major project we've had since--
Mark and Lindsay are the two-- Mark and Lindsay are the two mayor office employees that are working with the library group.
Is it ballpark $21 million?
I think it's estimated between 19 and 21 million.
Okay. Let's say it's 20, right in the middle. At 4% over two years, we're looking at another million and a half in construction inflation, correct?
If that's what you're calculating.
Well, that's 4% of 20 million, right?
Well, we had 4% of 10 million for the parking garage in 2012. We built it for 10.1. So that's not 4% either, but it was 4% estimated.
So are the, I guess my question, are construct, is construction inflation built in to the, the estimates for the, for the library?
Again, I don't have that answer.
The library director's shaking her head behind, behind you, is that correct? It is? Okay. And so the only way that, that would, that inflation, in that inflation that was built in, was it built in based on a two-year delay or is it built in, how many, how is the inflation built in? How many, because you can only build it in based on how long you expect to take to build it. It's mayor and town employees, I don't.
Come on up.
Who are you speaking to?
Ellen, you can come up.
You and your team, mayor.
President Reno? I have the information right here. From their grant application. So we don't actually.
So, so councilors, this is Director, it's Doris Cowdery who's, who's in charge of the, the library and it's, it's Ellen, the director of the library.
Isaac, from the time that the estimate was created, there was inflation built in for over a four-year period, 4% a year.
From the day that it was created, and when was it created?
That was about a year ago, we got those, 2016, we got the actual estimates from the architect.
So it's built in through 2020, which is approximately two years from now.
Correct.
So if we're delayed more than, than two years in the construction, we should anticipate. Was your estimate 4%? Is that what you used?
Yes, yes.
That, those were the only questions I had about the library. It really was. I do have questions about bonding.
Councilor Alice, do you have library questions?
Yeah, I have one question about that. Did you say four, it was four years built into the grant?
Into the, the architect's original estimate for the cost, which was about 20.5 million, it was the original estimate. That's before we did any value engineering, discussed the leads, you know, the platinum, lead's platinum issue?
Yeah, I'm just looking at, I'm looking at the cost summary in your grant application. It says 4% escalation for 36 months. Is that something different?
That may be our mistake, we thought it was four years.
Because this says 36 months and then for the total project cost, it would be $2,735,34 would be the additional amount, unless I'm reading this.
We don't have it in front of us.
Yeah, no, I, I, so I just, you had said 48 months and this says 36, so I just wanted to.
My memory was, and Ellen's the same, was that it was 48 months, so forgive us if.
Oh, I, I just wanted to just clarify, that's, that's no problem. So that 36, the 36 months was from the time of submission? Or the time that they did the actual study, is that correct?
Yeah. The, but the architect gave us the most recent data they had for us to give to the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners.
Right.
So it would have been at that point that we submitted that application.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Mass?
So following up on that. If we're, so if we're at 36 now, that's one year out. And so if this isn't going to be built for two years at a, at the minimum, based on the mayor's estimation, we're talking about another $750,000 in construction costs on that project, correct?
Can I debate that with you, Isaac? What you say sounds logical.
Could you get us some, some information on what delay in, in construction cost inflation will do to this project, so that we're, so we can wrap our heads around some real numbers when we're talking about the cost? And I don't expect you to know the answer now, but at some point, working with town staff.
Yes, absolutely, we'll see what we can do. We don't have an architect right now, we don't have an OPM right now, so that might be a difficult challenge, but we will take seriously your question and try to get you some answers.
Thank you.
Sure. And Doris, could you please speak in the microphone? I know GCTV can't pick you up, that's okay. And Councilor Dolan?
Yeah, I just, my understanding is that we're early enough in this process that construction inflation is one variable, but there's also a significant amount of value engineering that's going to go into the building. Is that correct?
There's variables in it, in that we will do value engineering, that's not been done, as I said. We, we, when we did the estimates, we asked for lead's platinum, it's absolutely the highest you can get. That was a wish. We'd love to have it, but we realized that that's very expensive, so we can back off from that and maybe just get net zero without any sort of certification, but get the same economies for our environment.
Thank you for coming up. And Mark and Mayor Martin, you're back on the hot seats. Councilor Mass?
Mr. Mayor, given that we're looking at some significant bonding being sent to the council for the library and significant either bonding or operating cost addition to the public safety, I have some concerns about bonding. I raised those with you and sent, you asked me to send you specifically what my questions were. I sent you about 11 questions related to bonding. Do you, about two weeks ago, do you know when you'll have the answers to those questions?
They weren't sent to you?
No, Mr. Mayor, they were not. I don't need them read to me. If you have them and you can send them, that'll be satisfactory.
Okay, so I can get you a copy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. And report from GSET. Director Lunt?
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
I did not see you last month, so I can tell you that the last several months were actually the strongest signup months that GSET has had. We hit 60 people for the last several months. Our billings have risen to just over 34,000 last month. We anticipate getting to about 36,000 this month. So we, I believe that is our 10th straight month of growth in both subscribers and revenue. And this month, we will cross 600 total subscribers in the town. We finished a fairly broad planning session with our Board of Commissioners and I think that, I just want to talk about the two most central things that we're doing for the fall. Right now, we're continuing to build out, we're working in East Greenfield right now. But this fall, the two main things we'll be focusing on is filling in the core, and that's on both sides of town, getting to places that are recessed back off the streets, like Greenfield Gardens, but also finishing out Silver Street and working primarily in the northeastern portion of town where there are portions that are lit up, but stretches like along Wildwood where we haven't managed to have complete coverage. We think that should cover another 600 to 700 households. A mix of single-family and rentals. I don't know the exact mix, but that is the next plan in terms of expanding coverage. And when we complete that, we should be at just about 84% of all households in Greenfield covered. The other main initiative for us for this fall is we are finishing up, it is not complete, but we're getting to the end of negotiations to be a co-marketing partner with Dish TV Networks to be able to offer a package of Internet Plus TV, either satellite TV or streaming TV through Sling TV, which is a part of the Dish family. And we should, by the late August, mid-September, be able to have offerings there, which we think will help us reach a demographic that we don't currently reach. There are some people who just want to think about those two things as one service, so we could then offer phone and internet and TV service. So that's primarily what we're working on at the moment.
Councilor Mass?
I think I heard you write 3,600 a month.
36,000. 36,000.
And what are your monthly expenses?
They're still running in between about 48 and 62, 63, I don't remember the exact number. We don't, our plan that we put forward, we plan to continue growing and to hit breakeven. It really will be towards the end of this fiscal year.
You anticipated the question I was going to ask, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Councilor Sun?
Yes, I just wondered why you picked Dish to go in with?
We actually reached out to major satellite carriers and Dish was the one that in the end showed the most interest. We were not able to make a lot of headway with other people and they have a good process and package. They're interested in working with municipalities and it was a good fit for us.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilor Gilmore?
I remember a few months ago, somebody had asked about the businesses on Main Street and whether or not they were going to have service soon, and I was wondering if that has been resolved.
Sure. Another part of, we call it the core infill. There is a section of fiber right outside, of multimode fiber, that's right outside the current firehouse that was damaged. We're not exactly how sure. And so that's made it difficult to light up the east side of Main Street. We will be working on that within the next several months to correct that. We do offer services to businesses that face Main Street, but some of the buildings are big enough that we will have to do some work and Main Street is in the infill plans for this fall. We will have to do some work to bring either fiber to certain buildings. We don't think our solution for what are called MDU, multiple dwelling units, is as good as it should be. So we're working on ways that we can go to the back of those buildings and effectively serve people. There is a landlord component in that as well too, and that we have to work with them. They understandably are interested in what's going on the outside of their buildings, so there's some negotiating that has to happen there too.
Any other questions? Thank you, Director Lunt.
Thank you.
Mayor Martin?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilor Mass asked for answers to his questions and at our last special meeting, I delivered the, to each council seat, the answers and some background information. So I do have one with me.
I was the president.
Exactly. So if I may approach the bench?
Sure. Now I'm the judge. School Committee Chairperson, Adrian Nunez.
That's me, Adrian Nunez. Hi, everyone, I have a brief report for you. It is summertime, so our summer school is underway, our summer meals program is also underway, and there are a lot of hiring, a lot of interviews and hiring going on for key positions in the district, including the Director of People's Services and the Greenfield Middle School Principal. The committee has a couple of things to share with you. We have recently voted to spend an additional $15,000 from the school department budget to ensure the completion of the Four Corners parking project as designed. This isn't typical for us to do, but in order to ensure that the project could be completed, we did vote to supplement the capital budget by $15,000. In addition, we have decided to participate in a self-evaluation process and we will hear the results from that self-evaluation at the August meeting. We are doing this in collaboration with a representative from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees who is helping, who's helping to compile our responses and report back to us. As well, the committee will be working with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees in a contracted policy support service. We're very much looking forward to that. It's quite an opportunity for our group and potentially the incoming group at the next election in support of our policy work. And we welcome Mr. Steve Nummerkow as our new business manager. He started the 1st of July, so he is settling in and we are excited to have him as a part of the team. And I think last but not least, our most exciting news is that we have voted to offer the superintendent, Jordana Harper, a three-year contract. We just voted on that yesterday after a very long negotiation. So we are excited to extend that to her and we are looking forward to some continuity in leadership in the district and getting to work focused on the kids.
Any questions? Councilor Sun?
One thing I'm glad, what happened to the superintendent, you know, I think is a great, great person to hire, rehire. And also, Four Corners School, have you got any, will it be finished before school starts?
Yes, that's my understanding, is that it will.
Good, because that's been needed for a number of years.
Thank you. I do have a quick statement from the superintendent in regards to the contract negotiation process and she just says that she's grateful for the support of the community and the interest in the long-term success of our schools. And the committee also is very appreciative of interest from the community that has been expressed related to the negotiation with the superintendent, so thank you very much for that. And then, Councilor Mass, I just, seeing you, I was reminded of the Green River School Building. We look forward to a full proposal on an alternative high school for the Green River School Building space at the August full committee meeting. There has been some dialogue at the subcommittee level about this, but we look forward to that in August also.
Councilor Sun?
Yes, there's been some things about the safety officers in the schools and I was wondering, what is Greenfield Schools' proposal to, as far as the safety of the schools? See, the governor has put out there for the schools in Massachusetts, a couple million dollars to help safety in the schools. I just wondered what Greenfield Schools, as far as safety for students, because there's some people that are really concerned about the safety officers in the schools and so that kids will be safer.
I'm not sure that I heard a specific question there, but I would agree with you that the school committee and the superintendent, we are always, our number one priority is the safety and security of students. And there has been a lot of work between the superintendent, the chief of police, and the fire chief to ensure that all of our procedures are, you know, really up to, up to the highest standard possible. And that work continues. Did I miss a specific question though? Is there any, a specific question that you had?
Well, it's just, some parents are seeing they voted against having say more than one. one safety officers around their schools, that they're really concerned, you know, and because one person can't go around and protect all the schools in Greenfield. And so they are really concerned, and they want to know what the school committee are gonna do about it.
Thank you. So, at this time, we have, in our voted budget for the upcoming school year, we do have thirty thousand dollars assigned to support one school resource officer that is predominantly stationed at the high school. It's my understanding that the superintendent and the chief of police actually have a follow-up meeting scheduled, I'm not sure if it's the end of this month or beginning of next month, to review the current school resource officer configuration, is the best way to put it. So, when I have further information, I can get back to you on it.
Councilor Mass.
Part of what I heard from Councilor Sun's question is about the governor's proposal for supplemental aid coming to schools specifically for school security, where that's a, likely to be a one-time payout. Is it fair to say that your priority would be swipe cards, as, which weren't approved in the capital budget through the mayor's office, as opposed to school resource officers for a one-time inflow?
I would need to do a little more research specifically on the governor's one-time funding related to safety and security, but I will say that the school committee did vote the capital priorities for the district. That was several months ago. Of course, it went through the capital projects process, and one of those priorities is swipe cards, and it is still on the mind of myself and the superintendent, and there is further discussion that needs to be had related to the prioritization of such capital projects.
And there was some discussion a couple of months ago about resending us a revision to the appropriation on public address systems that was previously approved by the council, but not in the form that the school committee wanted. How far away are we from receiving some action on that item?
There actually has been some action on that item. My understanding is that there has been a request for updated quotes, and that is underway, and I'm not sure if and at what time that would, any, any action of the council is needed, but that is definitely something that is underway in terms of the schools and, in terms of implementing that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chairperson Nunez.
Thank you.
All right, so, moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions, Councilor Gilmore. It's all yours.
The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council pursuant to Chapter Section 2-10, the town council approves the following reappointments and appointment by the mayor to the following boards and/or commissions for the express term. Irene Woods, Mayor's Domestic Violence Task Force, three-year term, December 31st, 2021. Tara Curland, which, this one was removed, right?
This is the right one.
Yes, I'll skip that one.
Nope, it's right, it's current.
Oh, this one's correct. Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee, sorry, I should have redheaded. Three-year term, 12/31/2021. Joshua Carnes, Trustees of Soldiers Memorial, three-year term, December 31st, 2021. Andrea Moorhead, Agricultural Commission, three-year term, December 31st, 2021. George Tomoltesis, Planning Board, three-year term, December 31st, 2021. Jamie Potter, Planning Board, three-year term, December 31st, 2021. And then, should I move, should I move on? And appointment, David Singer, Zoning Board of Appeals, three-year term, December 31st, 2021.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
We've approved this unanimously.
Okay, great. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Councilor Gilmore.
The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council rescind Order 17-123, that the Greenfield Town Council vote to opt out of remote participation authorized by Executive Order of the Mayor dated September 1st, 2015, approved on May 17th, 2017.
Is there a second? Did I miss it? Is there a second? Second. Motion's been made and seconded, and what was the report from committee?
I believe this was also passed unanimously. I turned my notes in to the clerk before I copied it down for myself.
Was there, is there any discussion? Councilor Mass, and then Councilor Wheeler.
More question for, because I was in president of that committee. This requires technology that I'm not sure that we have. The, when we rescinded this, we were at Greenfield Community Television, where we had greater access to technology than we do at this location. Can someone tell me how this would be effectuated?
Councilor Gilmore, do you want to answer that question, as you were at the Appointments and Ordinances Committee meeting, so?
We didn't really discuss the implementation. We were talking about resolving issues related to, you know, if there's a family emergency that takes somebody out of town, but maybe they're available to meet via Skype or Zoom or some other platform. We didn't really discuss the technology. We just discussed how it would help us complete our business.
Councilor Wheeler.
Yeah, Councilor Gilmore basically addressed what I was about to say. I think that it's important to opt into this policy in order to provide a mechanism for people who travel for their work, to sit on council and to run for council. I think it's important to provide people experiencing illness to have the option to participate. There is technology available that makes, you know, bringing in a Skype feed doable. I don't, I can't speak to the particulars of the current GCTV mobile setup. Certainly, at a more permanent location, it would not be a problem.
Councilor Dolan?
I'd also like to point out that, with regards to Councilor Mass's question, there's nothing in the executive order that mandates this, it just allows for it. So presumably, this is something that we would do if and when the technology was in a condition where we could do it.
Councilor Ellis.
Yeah, just, the state law is very specific on what has to be provided for when you do remote participation, and if we opt into it and someone wants to do it, we have to be able to provide the technology for it. And if that technology fails, you have to stop the meeting, you have to note the time that you stopped the meeting, you have to reestablish connection, and then you have to note the time that you reestablish that connection. Now, we tried this. We had, we tried it twice, I believe, yeah, two times, and both times it did not work. It worked about five percent, to my recollection. While I like remote participation, I like the idea of it, there are very, very specific laws that govern in the statute for remote participation from the state that we have to follow if we have it, and we cannot opt in for specific meetings. Once we opt in, we opt in for any meeting of the council. And if we rescind the order, that's also every meeting of the subcommittees as well, who would also have to have that functionality. The reason that we opted out of it was, was solely for the technological reasons that I was, that I'm stating, and has, because I believe everybody here agrees on the fundamental reasons why it's a good thing, I certainly do. However, I think, without having worked out the technological issues, it's gonna be more of the same that we had before. So, I just would urge people to take note of those things that we have to do if we opt back into it, and I think if we were to have that stuff cemented before opting back in, it would be a much more cohesive way to do it. Thanks.
Councilor Sun.
See, and I was one of those that tried, you know, tried this out in the first place, kept on going in and out a lot when I was at, and a lot, some of the people here were at that town council meeting. And one thing, it's gotta, if this happens, it's gotta be, so not only us can see what's going on, but the people out in the audience can know who's talking, who they're, who they are, and see who they are. Because some people, you know, they hear somebody talking, they want to know who's talking, and whether it's a town counselor or somebody stepping in for them when they're gone away. But it's a good idea, but you gotta have all your, your, everything in a row, you know, because like I was, a death and a close friend of mine died, and it's good that I was able to try. But we also gotta not make it a regular thing that one person can't be here, and so they will keep on going, and they, you know, because they're workers, they go on vacation or somewheres in Europe or wherever, that they don't make it so that they miss more in-house town council meetings, and do a lot of them away.
Councilor Wheeler.
I would point out that the law does allow for audio-only teleconferencing, but in, I hear the concerns of the council, and in light of them, I'd make a motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is tabled. Councilor Gilmore.
The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council amends the code of the town of Greenfield by adding Chapter 338, Privatizing City Services Ordinance is attached here, too, and further amends the Table of Contents and Index of Contents of the Code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinances be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the town of Greenfield.
Your second? Report from committee?
So, when we approved this, this wasn't at the last meeting, it was the one prior, and we had agreed to send this to legal, assuming that it was gonna come back to us. So I would actually like to make a motion to table this, because we just got that feedback recently, and I don't think we've had a chance to look at it.
Madam President, can you clarify for me, is the motion to table or to refer back to committee?
The motion is to table. Is there a second? So, the motion's been made, and it was seconded, and then there was a report from committee, and then a motion's been made to table this motion and second it, and it's a non-debatable motion, so we're just gonna vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstain? Could we just do a roll call vote, just in case?
Councilor Sun? Councilor Lobek? Councilor Ellis? Councilor Dolan? Councilor Gilmore?
Yes.
Councilor Wheeler?
Yes.
Councilor Mayo?
Yes.
Councilor Leonovich?
Yes.
Councilor Mass?
No.
The motion is tabled. Councilor Ellis, would you do the warrant?
Just 'cause I talk fast.
Yes, exactly.
Is it actually page 49 and not 48? Okay. Okay. Move that it... Oh. I don't, oh, okay, I don't have that. Okay. I have to read the whole thing into the record, correct? Move that it be ordered that the town of Greenfield hereby approves the attached state primary election warrant for September 4th, 2018, and further authorizes the town council president to sign said warrant on behalf of the town council. Warrant reads as follows. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth, warrant state primary September 4th, 2018, that's the header. S.S. Franklin, to either of the constables of the town of Greenfield, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in primaries, to vote at Greenfield High School Gymnasium, Bar Avenue, precincts 1 through 9. Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. On Thursday, the fourth day of September 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., for the following purpose, to cast their votes in the state primaries for the candidates of political parties for the following offices. Senator in Congress for this Commonwealth, Governor for this Commonwealth, Lieutenant Governor for this Commonwealth, Attorney General for this Commonwealth, Secretary of State for this Commonwealth, Treasurer and Receiver General for this Commonwealth, Auditor for this Commonwealth, Representative in Congress, 2nd District, Counselor, 8th District, Senator in General Court, Hampshire, Franklin, and Worcester District, Representative in General Court, 2nd Berkshire District, District Attorney, Northwestern District, Clerks, Clerk of Courts, Franklin County, Register of Deeds, Franklin District. Hear, fail not, and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting. Given under our hands this 18th day of July, 2018, it will be signed. Town Council President Karen Reno, as authorized by vote of the Greenfield Council by Constable posting, Constable date of posting.
Any discussion? Councilor Gilmore?
I'm pretty sure September 4th is a Tuesday, not a Thursday. I don't want to approve this and have it be wrong for technicality.
I would make a, I'd like to make a friendly amendment, Tuesday is the 4th. Make a friendly amendment that where it reads "Thursday" at, in any place in this document, is changed to "Tuesday, the 4th day of September."
Good eye, Councilor Gilmore.
We'd be having a special meeting, because that happened before.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Petition, presentation of petitions and similar papers. Reports of committee. Let's start with Councilor Leonovich, with the Economic Development Committee.
So, we've been working on the initiative set forth by, by Council President. We've been contacting businesses in the, in the town of Greenfield, the city of Greenfield, to discuss what they, what they feel as far as Greenfield being a welcoming community to businesses or not. We've each been assigned separate industries, I guess you could say, and all of us have been contacting those members of the community, whether they were able to establish a business and currently have a business, or were not able to establish a business. So, we're gathering all that information. We're, once we have some information, we're gonna invite those who would be willing to attend one of the subcommittees, and really get a good back-and-forth going. I will say that it's been my experience that everyone that I've been talking to has been really encouraged by the fact that we're taking this initiative to, to really see what the root cause of either the benefits of what Greenfield is doing to attract businesses, or the downside of how people feel like it is an unfriendly environment. So it's been a lot of great work, a lot of collaboration between all the councils, and it's been, hopefully, gonna be fruitful.
Thank you, Councilor Leonovich. Be interested in the results of that.
Absolutely.
Councilor Mass, CRE?
CRE met on the beautiful lawn of the Leidenwoods meeting location. However, we had a productive meeting. Councilors agreed to work collaboratively with the mayor's office. Each counselor took one of the Western Massachusetts state senators to ask them to... Each counselor took one of the Western Massachusetts state senators to ask them to earmark, to, to put Senator Mark, Representative Mark's earmark for Highland Pond into the Senate bill. I know I've heard reported back from many of the counselors that they have actually made those calls and reached out. The response from staffers was relatively good. Our next meeting is at our usual time, and we'll be at the John Zong Community Center. Counselor Mayo is graciously agreed to be the chairperson that evening, as I will be on vacation at the Cape. And the following month, in August, we've secured the hospital meeting room for our regular meeting. We will continue to take up Highland Pond, and as you heard from the school committee, they are looking at Green River School, and they're bringing information back to us on the future of Green River School as well, and may possibly be having a joint public hearing as to the future of that, that building with a subcommittee of the school committee, which would be a historic and cooperative step, and would be really good. So we're pushing forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mas, and we don't have a ways and means, and we don't have A and O, but thank you, Counselor Gilmore, for filling in for appointments and ordinances. And so, moving on, unfinished business. Old business. Motions for reconsideration. Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? This motion is hereby adjourned at 8:15.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield, call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield, visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield, you can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave, call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.